We offer you peace.
We offer you peace.
We offer you friendship.
We offer you friendship.
We offer you love.
We offer you love.
We hear your needs.
We hear your needs.
We see your beauty.
We see your beauty.
We are all smart in our own way.
We are all smart in our own way.
We honor that in you.
We honor that in you.
Let us work together.
Let us work together.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is the agenda. So if anyone has any items, does anyone have any items they would like to remove from the consent agenda or committee minutes?
Yes, the consent agenda?
Consent agenda.
Could we please remove the minute, the DE and I committee minutes of January 15, unless, I'm sorry, I didn't check them, but right before the meeting, were they formalized?
Not that I, not from that email this afternoon.
Okay, thank you.
So we'll remove the committee meeting minutes, the DE and I, from
One fifteen.
January 15. What's that? So anyone else would like to remove anything from the consent agenda? Committee minutes?
Commissioner Vantage. I would like to remove the name of LaShawn Whitmore-Sell for Flynn Principal.
So just, so just to make a point of order, you're asking to pull the routine hiring recommendation, seven B?
Correct.
Okay, so we'll pull that whole item. Are you asking to pull that as, to make it a separate agenda item?
Point of order. She's not asking to remove all the names, just one name, and that's perfectly legal.
Yes, to remove the recommendation from the consent agenda.
We're not deliberating on.
This one. Okay, so item seven B?
So seven B. Yeah.
Click on this.
Okay. Okay.
Anything else? Yep, so does anyone have any changes to, so any changes to the regular agenda?
I do, Chair Wohl.
Commissioner Wick?
Chair Wohl, I'd like to request that we move item four, good news, up to prior to public comment, so I'd insert it as item two A. Good news, which is now two, 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 three items, I guess. Ms. Lee, Ms. Boda, staff highlights.
Thank you, Commissioner Wick. All right, with that, will someone give me a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Commissioner Carey, second. Commissioner Orwell? Okay, let's vote. All those in favor of adopting the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Any abstentions, then the motion carries. Thank you. So then next on the agenda would be acknowledging our students for raising the bar here in Burlington High School. If Vivian Lee and her mom, Tina, could come up? We'll stand over here.
Grab a mic.
Do you want this one?
Jeff Scott.
So, Valena Lee is one of our Burlington High School seniors who in February participated in the 10th Annual Vermont Brain B Competition at the University of Vermont. The Brain B is a neuroscience competition, written and practical exams, as well as an oral round of questioning. Last year, Valena was a participant in the Vermont Brain B, and she came in third place. This year, she participated in the competition again with nearly 50 students from the high schools across Vermont, and we are proud to say she came in first place. She has a difficult job of standing here before all of you, announcing accolades, and she has the difficult job of representing the state of Vermont in the National Brain B Competition at Penn State Medical Center in Hershey, Pennsylvania in April. Congratulations on behalf of the entire Burlington School District, and we see some teachers here tonight, and your VHS colleagues, faculty, staff, Superintendent O'Bang, for raising the bar at Burlington Schools. And I'd love you to share what you've shared earlier with me, and when I see you on a daily basis, and your, you know, acceptances to postgraduate, you know, institutions. You're just an incredible role model to all of us here, and your fellow students and your future students. Want to speak?
Thank you all so much. For your round of applause, I am thrilled to be representing Vermont at Nationals next month. I hope to serve as an inspiration to everybody, and even more so women and people of color who hope to pursue a future in STEM. Thank you very much. Your team.
And continuing on with our good news and our student focus, I'll ask Maya Boda and her family to come up, please. And Bonnie, can you do up her video? We'll play the video first in a minute.
Is your jacket on, please?
Yeah.
Maybe I'll start first.
Maybe you'll do that first.
I'll start first, and then we'll go to the video. So Maya, come on up here. So Maya's a junior, was recently named one of the finalists in the Youth Filmmakers Awards category of the AT&amp;T Film Awards for winning submissions, a powerful look at distracted driving in our community. When I saw your video, I'm always thinking about when I'm driving, when I get like a phone call or a text on the chair. Okay, no, Maya said, "Don't look down." So as a finalist, Boda has won, has won all expense paid trip to the opening weekend of the Trebekka Film Festival, where she will work with fresh films to receive training to develop as storytellers, and create a video about the experience. This is not Maya's first recognition for film. As her, as her own website states, Maya started making films at 13, and has created numerous documentaries and narrative shorts. And she has won awards from the New England Scholastic Press Association in freedom and unity contests for films about Women's March and the Black Lives Matter flag raising at Burlington High School. Congratulations, Maya, and your family, and we're proud to have you amongst us.
Thank you.
Okay, now I'm going to play the video.
I'll play the video. Out of videos.
When I was in driver's ed, I was scared out of my mind. With all the videos and stories they told us about texting and driving, I was anxious to do anything to not get in one of those same crashes. And to be honest, my partner was not a naturally good driver. So if I felt unsafe while riding in the car with an undistracted driver and an instructor who had an emergency brake button, how unsafe would it be if the drivers were distracted? Once I got my license and could drive by myself, I didn't touch my phone while driving for months. But over time, I started to pick it up quickly to change my music or send a quick text. So I became curious. How many of my peers had done the same? How many of them were also checking their notifications or sending texts while driving? I set out to see just how many of my classmates were driving distracted.
Do you have your license?
Yeah, I do.
You do? Do you drive regularly?
Yeah, I drive almost every day.
Do you ever have your phone out while you're driving?
Um, yeah.
Sometimes I Snapchat. Sometimes I look through the music.
Do you ever have your phone out while you're driving?
I do.
Be honest.
I do, but I'm not focused, usually music.
Or if I'm at like a stoplight, then I'll like grab it and have it as long as I can.
I was wondering, do you ever drive distracted? Be honest. Be honest.
Ever.
I admitted. I admit to. Music.
Sometimes I don't do texting drive, but I'll often like look and like try to find music while driving. Like if I'm at a stoplight, you should hang on.
It really depends on like the situation you're in, like if there's a lot of traffic, then maybe like you can hold it out a little bit.
Yeah, like a short answer, okay.
That's my skill, a song. While I change my playlist, but usually at red lights only.
Do you have your phone out while you're driving?
Yes.
Look for music and occasionally. Do you ever drive distracted? Distracted driving counts like you and your mom.
Yes.
Then no.
That's all.
Okay, guys, I often drive distracted.
Straight up.
Honest. I'm on my phone a lot. I scheduled this nail appointment in the car.
Because I drive a stick, it's really hard because my phone while I'm driving. The way I figure it out is if I'm holding like food or something in my left hand, I can steer with my elbow and then shift and eat at the same time. At the stick.
What does your car look like on the outside?
Oh, it's a lot of fuel. Oh, yeah.
Have you ever seen somebody texting driving while you're in the car with them?
Yes, a lot of times.
Yeah, all the time.
All the time. Some friends, maybe like, maybe for like at a stop, pop in front of like text someone.
I've gone to multiple little kids in the career. Really? From texting and driving? Yeah, from texting and driving. My dad, my dad drives 100 miles per hour on the interstate and is on his phone texting the whole time. Have you ever been in a car crash?
Indeed, I have.
Really?
And I indeed caused it, there were two other people in the car. And so I was like trying to have them text, but then like I got distracted by them texting for me, and like they were reading me the text, and it was just like a stressful situation. So I like accidentally let my foot off the brake, and I ended up running over a street pole. The street pole definitely fell over, and the car definitely destroyed. But texting and driving is a very bad idea.
I chose a completely random sample of students in my class. In a safe world, none of them would even say they've touched their phones while driving. We should be doing better than this. The bottom line is, if this many people are admitting to driving distracted, none of us are safe.
Thank you very much for taking the time out of your day to be here and allowing us to acknowledge you. It was wonderful. Next is good news. We would like to acknowledge a school board member, Mark Barlow, and Commissioner Curry has prepared something on behalf of the entire board, so we'd like to acknowledge Mark Barlow, who is not, did not seek reelection, and we appreciate his service and his dedication, and I'll let Commissioner Curry take it away.
All right, thank you. Since I've served with you lo longest, I get the honor of, of speaking to the good work that you've done. It was a pleasure to get to know you when you joined the board four years ago. And you have a natural ability to approach each issue and discussion and decision in the most objective way possible after considering and often thinking deeply about the multiple ways of looking at many of the issues we take up. We all have our biases, but when we take an oath of office, we are bound to act on behalf of the public and be accountable to voters and taxpayers to the greatest degree possible, and you have taken that oath to heart. You have practiced the art of gathering as much information as possible when considering an issue with curiosity, humility, humor, and positivity. I'll miss the way you reason through the topics that we grapple with, and we'll miss the unique perspective you bring that is often informed after speaking with and listening to many different people. Your constituents have been fortunate that you've made yourself available to them on at least a monthly, if not a weekly, basis in many cases. During the four years I've served with you, I've learned much about the North District that you've represented, the importance of patience, the benefit of listening more than speaking, and the impact that one person can have by exhibiting consistency, honesty, and persistence when playing the long game to meet the kinds of challenges and opportunities that face our students. Thank you in particular for grappling with the legislative issues that we encountered along the way, trying to solve the puzzle of equitable funding for a district like Burlington. I know that many of your questions and suggestions were respected and heeded by our legislators because they heard well reasoned arguments that you made for small tweaks to existing laws that would clear some hurdles for a district like ours. I think some of my fellow, if not all of my fellow commissioners would agree that your public service has greatly benefited the district, and I hope it's not the last time you participate in government as an elected official.
So on behalf of the school board, we want to thank Mark Barlow for raising the bar and your dedication and community activism in our city. Thank you very much. T-shirt? What?
That's why it smells so good. I know.
Chair Wohl?
Yes.
If I may, can't hear. Mike? Testing, nope. Testing, nope. Testing, testing. No, ask for the TV. Testing. Testing, testing. Testing. It's okay, give me the hand.
Thank you. I didn't want Commissioner Barlow to leave without making a few quick comments.
Yes.
A thank you from the superintendent's office. When I arrived in Burlington years ago, Mark was one of the commissioners on the board, and I have to say that Mark has been a model board member. Through adversity, through the highs and lows, Mark has always been even keel, very reasoned board member. And I have to tell you that he is one that is truly advocating for our students and our district. Not that everyone else isn't, but I know that Mark does that reflective piece, even when he's thinking of things that benefits him or sees his perspective, he tries to see the other side, and I really appreciated that through your time here, Mark, and also appreciated the support that you've given me throughout the, the course of, of your tenure, and you've, you have a lot to be proud of going out. You've accomplished a great deal. I know sometimes it may feel that you haven't, but you've accomplished a great deal in terms of being on the board, and we know the legacy that you leave behind in terms of the bonds that we've passed, the curriculum initiatives, and of course legislative work that has been done throughout the, the course of your tenure. So feel good about what you're doing. We'll, we'll, we'll try to resonate and keep your spirit alive as, as you go back to your family and spend the time, but thank you personally from me and from our, and from staff have appreciated your, your cooperation as well, too.
Next on the agenda is public comment. Clerk, have the signee.
Thank you.
Commissioner Fisher.
All right, first up is Mary Northrup. On deck is Stephanie Yu.
Hi, welcome, Mary.
I'm a par educator in the VHS for our educators. I've been working at VHS for 25 years. I've seen a range of different, worked with all different children. Contive impairments, physical impairments, epilepsy. I have to say, those 25 years, I've seen a lot of changes, but a lot of positive things. I've seen a lot of kids go from being in a one, one classroom to being included in mainstreamed introductory classes, making friendships with children that they might not have met 20 years ago and when I started. And I just wanted just to let everyone know that, you know, we work really hard, and we work day to day with usually one child. I work one-on-one with one child. And I've been able to see in just the three years that I've worked with him, how much growth he's, he's had, and it's something that's very rewarding, and I wish that everyone can kind of experience that with just, even if it's just one kid that they work with. So I want to thank you for your.
Thank you.
Stephanie Yu, on deck, Carol Livingston.
Welcome, Stephanie.
Thanks, I appreciate the opportunity. I think most of you are probably aware of the situation at IAA regarding a fourth grade teacher, Autumn Ben-Gora, who recently applied for and was selected for the position of Equity Instructional Leader in the district. And while we think this is an important position for the district, and that Autumn's a great choice for that position, we also have some concerns about the decision to pull her out of the classroom mid-year, and how that decision was made and how that was handled. I'm speaking on behalf of a number of parents in the classroom, including my daughter. And we received a letter home on the 21st of February, the Thursday before break, that her last day would be Friday, the next day. And then, and so several parents got together, we wrote a letter, we had some concerns, we raised those concerns. I think those were shared with all of you, as well as Superintendent O'Bang, and our, and Autumn, and our principal, Bobby Riley, as well. And we got a response from that, from that letter around the 25th of February, and that indicated that Autumn was going to have some flexibility regarding sort of how much time she could spend in the classroom and what her schedule was going to be like after the break, which we appreciate, but it, we didn't really feel like it, like the response addressed all of our questions. So a couple of us, myself included, sent a couple of follow-up emails. Some of you were CC'd, you know, I don't, we don't know all the board members, so it was sort of a mix of groups, but it was, but primarily the questions were sent to Superintendent O'Bang to kind of follow up and see if we could get to answer to these questions. And so the two direct questions that we sort of, that I raised on behalf of the parents and now was, one, why was it so urgent that we filled a position right then in the middle of the school year? So the position, I'm sure as you know, has been vacant for 15 months now, and it wasn't clear to us why it was so urgent that you would, that the decision was made to pull out a classroom teacher in the middle of the year. The second piece is the communication problem and why the transition happened so abruptly. Like I said, we were given one day's notice, and it's my understanding that the school was not given much more notice than that. And so, you know, we do have some concerns about sort of how abruptly that happened, what the impact was for the kids. We then went into break, and you know, there was sort of a lot of stress about what was going to happen after break. And the kids, you know, kept going obviously very upset with that, and really didn't know what to expect, and since we've gotten back from break, there's sort of been a lot of uneven things happening. You know, Autumn has been able to be there some of the time, but it's sort of been unpredictable, and while we appreciate that flexibility, I think sometimes the lack of structure and the uncertainty for the kids is equally a problem in addition to sort of the transition itself. So I think the, the things that we would ask is, one, that there be an answer to that que, to those questions, why it needed to happen right now, and why we sort of weren't given more notice or more preparation in order to prepare the kids for that. Excuse me. I think, you know, a couple of these, many of the kids went through a similar transition when they lost their teacher due to health reasons in second grade, so they've been through this before, and it's been rocky and tough. And so we sort of are aware of what the challenges are around this. We also have real concerns about the transition plan. There's, there's, the plan involves keeping the student-teacher in the classroom who's been with the group for the year, but then also bringing in a long-term sub who is a para with this, with some of these kids in second grade. But we've already sort of been hearing some reports of disruptions and some stories, and you know, it's early days, but we do have some concerns about how that's going. We also know that while Autumn has some flexibility, it's also sort of not a certain thing about what the timing's going to be, how that's going to go, and what, what the extent of her involvement is going to be. So, and then the third concern I think that we have would be just in terms of the communication. I think, you know, as I said, I wrote, and another parent wrote, and we didn't get a response, and we have some concerns about how that, and we'd just like to clarify what, what we should expect when we send a response, and what that should look like, and you know, what the communication policy is, if any, in that situation, and just kind of reset that going forward so that we know that that's not happening again, and that we're kind of in the loop on that. But I think our main ask and our main concern is just that there, one, that possibly reconsider the timing, because I think, you know, this is still happening, this is somebody who's in the district who's moving to another position in the district, so it's not set in stone, but I also think we just need, we need to have a fair conversation about what, what is going to happen going forward. Could she spend some consistent time in the classroom, how long, and what that should look like? You know, I think it's our belief that, you know, pulling a teacher out of the classroom in the middle of the year should sort of be a last resort rather than part of the plan, no matter how solid that transition plan may be. And, and again, and I think what we're, our fear is that that transition plan maybe is not so solid, and we want to make sure that the parents' voices are heard in terms of that, because I think that it's, that our role is critical both in sort of knowing what's going on in our kids' classrooms, but also being able to monitor their wellbeing, which they might not always express during school, but may express at home instead. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Carol Livingston, on deck, Diane Trombley.
Hi, welcome, Carol.
Hi. Just feel like everyone needs to take a breath after that. I just, right? I'm Carol Livingston, and I am a veteran teacher. I retired just a couple of years ago to take a position as a para educator at Flynn. I'm a para in the library, which is a wonderful place to be. And I'm also the rep for the paras in our school, so I have a chance to sort of hear people's stories and observe as sort of a, at a distance. And one of the things that I notice, because I was a teacher for 40 years, is that special educators and para educators have a position, are in a position that many of us are, don't recognize how incredibly tough it is. It's not an exact science. You all know from working with kids that it is, it is, you can make observations and collect data and have lots of experience and do lots of trial and error, but particularly with the kids that our paras are working with, these are kids who've been through a lot of trauma and really struggle, and it's incredible, the art that they practice in seeing what works and what doesn't, and to help their kids be successful. I'm going to put forward two, two letters. I'm just going to read excerpts from one of them. This is from Valerie Deeb, who has been a para educator for the past 20 years. When it's said that, quote, "Maybe we don't need as many paras," or quote, "They're just babysitting," I have to assume that those statements are made by individuals who have no clear understanding of the real import of the work we do. For example, when we are just sitting next to our student in the classroom, we have already rephrased the written question in many different ways, sometimes with hand and body movement, until our students can make connections with what they are being asked, making sure that they are feeling confident and good about themselves, knowing that they may get angry and frustrated, explaining that it's okay for them to feel those feelings when something is hard. When you see us walking down the hall with our student or students for the fourth time that afternoon, we are not ignoring their academic responsibility. We are giving them a quick motor break so they can be in the classroom without disturbing others. We are building a bond so they will feel comfortable and safe enough with us to let us know if a peer has said or done something to upset them, or if they have witnessed their daddy get mad at mommy and hit her. We are helping our students learn how to express their intense, overwhelming, big emotions, so that they can effectively communicate with others without it turning into a hands-on situation, or students withdrawing into themselves. It's a job that's extremely rewarding and one that not just anyone can do. More and more, we come home mentally and physically exhausted. We are always aware of what is going on around us in case something triggers one of our students. We come home with bruises on our bodies, scratches, and bite marks. We've been spit on, told we are hated, asked to go to hell, and some other phrases, all while having markers and chairs thrown at us. These are the kids that need our help the most. These are the kids that because they have access to a para, will make positive steps. As a para, it's a happy feeling to witness when our kids have remembered the steps to solving a solving a math problem by themselves, or can decode a word that they have been having trouble with all year because now they know the strategies. It's the best feeling to see our kids use their words to tell someone, "I don't like that," instead of kicking them in anger. They are feeling self-assured and good about themselves. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Diane Trombley, uh, on deck Tyler Doggett.
Hi, welcome Diane.
Thank you. Uh, good evening. My name is Diane Trombley and I've been an intensive needs paraprofessional at Champlain School for two and a half years. Um, when offered this position, I said yes because as a licensed, retired, twenty-year classroom teacher veteran, I know that the duties I would be performing and the relationships I would be building were critical to all the students' success in any classroom. This is what I value. I value helping to establish a classroom environment within which all students are able to learn. As an intensive needs paraprofessional, I provide specialized assistance for our most vulnerable students, those with multiple disabilities. My goals are to support my students' attainment of their individual education plan goals. And those goals include academic, social, emotional, physical and life skills. So you see, this job is really so important. I do it because I love kids, I care about them and I'm fascinated with how they learn. The kids inspire me, they're innocent, funny and full of love. They generate joy. Um, I'd like to invite each and every one of the board members to shadow me sometime at Champlain School. Would love to have you join us. Does anybody have any questions about what it means to be an intensive needs paraprofessional?
So Diane, we'll do that at Board Reflection, well, if we have any questions, but thank you.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Tyler Doggett, uh, up on deck Christina Erickson.
Hi, welcome Tyler.
I'd like to talk about the principal situation, but before that, I just wanted to echo all the concerns that Stephanie raised and, uh, to say I share her questions and I'm keen to get some answers to all those questions. Uh, I know you have a lot going on with these principal searches that are underway and I'm just here to, uh, say, I hope that we have a standardized process across the schools, especially the like schools, like the elementary schools. Uh, and also that that process is transparent. So Russ, you know, I appreciate very much that you sent up this survey, uh, for parents and community members to take today and I'm hoping that there's some clarity about what's going to happen with the data, uh, that's collected. That's one example. Uh, as another example, it'd be great to know more about, uh, how the candidates are being pooled. Uh, is it the case, for example, that Champlain, IAA and SA all have candidates that go into a single pool? Uh, on the one hand, I get that that provides a deeper pool. On the other hand, those three schools have very different, uh, principal needs and they have different, uh, educational philosophies, they have different student populations and challenges going forward. And so that's another example of something. Uh, it would be good to get some transparency, uh, about upfront and so I hope that happens and I look forward to hearing from you. Thanks.
Christina Erickson, uh, on deck Corley Bisby.
Welcome Christina.
Thank you, good evening. Um, I am here as a follow-up and really appreciate the fact to see the piece on the agenda related to the magnet school review assessment plan and just really urge, um, that, that plan going forward includes all constituents of, of the schools. Staff have a lot to offer, families have a lot to offer, um, our leadership. And in light of potential leadership changes at both magnet schools, it seems like we, um, just need to incorporate that, those transitions into the evaluation process. So wherever it falls with our leadership changes and if we wind up in an interim situation, that it's just clear about, uh, who the magnet schools are currently, what the evaluation process may be, um, and what potential outcomes are after that process and how either current or future or interim leaders are included in that process. So it's complicated. I think with this new, uh, news with the leadership changes, it just kind of complicates that process a little bit. And so I'm just curious to see how that moves forward and just want to off, offer our assistance in terms of on behalf of families. I know at SA and I would imagine at IAA too, families are really eager to understand if the magnet schools are achieving the goals that they, uh, set out to achieve, or perhaps they are achieving different goals, or perhaps they're not achieving those goals. But we'd like to, um, it's an exciting time to see, uh, what, what the stance of those schools are and, uh, how we can best incorporate current interim and/or future leaders in that process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Corley Bisby.
Welcome Corley.
Thank you. Good evening everyone. My name is Corley Bisby, I'm a community organizer for Parents and Youth for Change. And we have a set of questions for regarding Title I and parent engagement and parent involvement process. Uh, some of the questions are regarding the continuous improvement plan. PYC is interested in learning more about how the needs identified in the CIP are being reflected in the Burlington School District Continuous Improvement Plan and how it is updated. What is the plan for the reviewing and evaluating the impact of the investment in the, the CIP? What is the status in the implementation process and the timeline for the Burlington School District, um, CIP? Could the public have access to the CIP, the status and the timeline and how? Regarding to parent guardian involvement policy and the school compacts, PYC is interested in learning more about the strategies that are being used and how outreach is being done for the Title I meeting in parent involvement. PYC is interested in learning more about whether, uh, whether and/or how the Burlington School District has identified the barriers to greater participation by parents. Are those findings being used to design strategies for more effective parent involvement policy and the school compact? The Burlington School District has a parent guardian involvement policy that includes Title I and was last updated in February two thousand fourteen, uh, which is shown in your website. What are the plans to revise and modify those strategies in order to reflect the SA Parents and Family Engagement requirements? I'm sure we're going to get a lot of answers for those questions later on on this agenda and we appreciate it. Thank you for the time that you've given us.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak at public comment?
Okay, so that concludes public comment. Next on the agenda would be Board Reflection. Do any board members at this time wish to reflect? Commissioner Curry.
I just wanted to ask PYC if they could please submit the questions in writing, like just send in an email to the superintendent, please, just so we have a list of them. Um, so it's.
Well, I'll take your.
Yeah.
You'll, you'll share them?
Thank you.
Commissioner Wick? Any other board reflections? Commissioner Awal?
Yes. I would like to thank all of you for, is this on?
It's coming up.
I'd like to thank all of you for coming forward and speaking. We are listening and we appreciate what you have brought forward. The other thing I want to just make everyone clear, we were supposed to have a, um, meeting of the Curriculum and Personnel Committee tomorrow evening at SA. That has been canceled and it will, we will put out when it is the next time when everyone can make that meeting. All right? Thank you.
Commissioner Vantich.
I would like to thank everyone for coming out and speaking out, uh, the, I enjoy learning about the paraprofessionals. Um, and also I wanted to say that my heart goes out for the fourth-grade families at IAA because as a parent, I came this close to being in your situation. Um, I am very excited that the school district found an excellent candidate for, um, the Equity Coach, the Equity Instructional Leader. Um, and, uh, that is great. Um, but, um, I think the district should have been willing to wait till the school year's over so that this person could complete their year with their current children. What we should be doing is what's best for our kids, not pulling someone out of their current position and putting them into a position that's been vacant for the last fifteen years. And I'm also curious to know why that is such an important thing to be doing at this point in time.
Anyone else? Commissioner Curry.
I want, I want to thank everyone also for speaking tonight on various topics. And I'll echo what Monica just said about the, um, the transition that's occurring at IAA right now. Not sure why, I would like to know why, and I think we might be able to find out why at some point soon. But I do want to, um, I do want to thank in particular Carol and Diane who spoke, uh, from their hearts about how difficult it is, but also rewarding if you have that right personality of support for those kids who are often not visible in our schools. And, um, you know, I can't think of two people who are more valuable to the children that they work with than the two women who spoke tonight about that. It's, it's, um, it's too easy to, um, to not forget, but it's too easy to just, you know, not be aware of how difficult and how rewarding it is at the same time, but particularly how difficult it is to work with kids of intensive need. And, and that's a really good idea to go and shadow, was it Carol or Diane? To shadow you because it's, uh, it's, it's very revealing when, when one sees what really happens in the schools. And so I just want to thank you in particular tonight for reminding me, you know, I, I wa, I worked, I worked at a school for many years and, and that was a reminder of, uh, of really what goes on on a daily basis. So thank you.
Commissioner Pillsbury.
I want to, uh, reflect on the fact that the, the district seems to be getting involved with Mr. Levinson, who is an advocate for, uh, hiring more professional teachers and less parent educators. And I'm just really saddened to think that that might be something that we have to deal with in the future because I think higher ed has always thought that, uh, parent educators probably didn't have the value that, that they, they do have. They, well, I don't know why they would know that, they teach in a, in a higher ed classroom. But they've always been out about Vermont's number of parent educators, but the parent educators are what make our system work so well in Burlington and work so well in the state of Vermont. So I'm looking, not looking forward to the discussions that we have to have with this gentleman who thinks that parent educators do not have a value. I also am looking forward to a discussion, uh, about the value of magnet schools. I don't think that they're being supported as they originally were, uh, were supposed to be supported. I have a report here from a very, a large committee that worked, uh, very hard for a whole year in two thousand six and produced a report on, on how the Burlington School Board Task Force on Removing Obstacles to the Success of Students for Low-Income Families. And we keep talking about raising the bar and achievement gap, but one of the major reasons, we were thinking back in the early two thousands, how could we help the students who are from low incomes and improve their achievement? And that is where the idea of magnet schools came in. I think we totally forgot that when we go to talk about silos, when we refer to schools. And I'm a farm boy, a silo is what we have food for cows. A school is not a silo. It is a unique learning opportunity, learning community for students, and all of our students are different. And we need to make sure that we, we teach them in the unique way that they will learn. And magnet schools seem to work for many children and families. I hope that we will be more supportive of the magnet schools in the coming future.
Thank you, Commissioner Pillsbury. Anyone else? With that, as Chair, I would just like to acknowledge all the parents that are here tonight. Um, we see you Mary every day here at VHS as well as those that spoke. Um, we are indebted to your service. We see transitions happening, uh, on the daily. We see the success and we see that you are closest to family, to these children. And we thank you for your service and we appreciate you coming out tonight and sharing your experiences and your hopes and your dedication to the district. Retention of you is very important. We appreciate and value you. And thank you to those parents that also spoke. Next on the agenda, we will move into executive session and I'd ask Commissioner Fisher to read, uh, the executive session.
So I'd like to make a motion to enter executive session under one VSA three-one-three-A-three, um, to discuss principal hiring and the Equity Instructional Leader position.
Would you like a motion to move into executive session?
That was the motion.
Yeah, thank you. Second? Commissioner Gulick? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, the motion passes, we'll move into executive session. Thank you. I would like Commissioner Fisher to, um, propose.
Pillsbury's going to make the first.
Oh, I know. Oh, all right, I'm sorry.
Uh, Commissioner.
Commissioner Curry is going to make a motion based on our session, executive session.
Okay, I have a motion to make. In the best interest of Burlington students, be it resolved that the school board request the superintendent, consider delaying the transfer of the IAA classroom teacher until the end of the school year.
Do I have a second?
Yes, I second.
Okay. Yes, any discussion amongst the school board? Okay. Then I would ask, all those in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Nay? Any abstentions? Okay, then the motion passes. Thank you, Commissioner Curry. Next is a motion, uh, coming out of executive session with regards to, uh, principal hiring. Commissioner Wick?
I'll make the motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent to hire LaShawn Sells as, uh, principal of Flynn School starting July first, twenty nineteen.
Second?
Commissioner Brado, thank you for the second. So I would ask, all those in favor of, uh, accepting the endorsement and recommendation for superintendent, uh, the hire of LaShawn Sells, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No.
Aye.
Okay, so we're going to have to do a.
Roll call.
Roll call? Okay.
Yeah.
So let me get out my pen. Sorry, I lost my pen.
Is it a roll?
I need a pen. All right, I have it, thank you, sorry. Okay. So.
Just so we double count.
Yep. So those in favor, Commissioner Gorman?
Wait, can we not have any discussion?
Oh, you have to say, right, we forgot. So we can take that back and say any discussion.
Thank you, Commissioner Wick. Sorry with the motion. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Fisher.
So I just want to make sure I understand the motion. The motion is to accept the, uh, recommendation. Thank you.
Okay. So seeing no discussion, sorry, Commissioner Vantich?
I just wanted to say that I'm concerned about moving administrators around in the district, uh, for climate, um, purposes and, um, also I am not certain that this is the best decision for J.J. Flynn Elementary School.
Thank you, Commissioner Vantich. Thank you, Commissioner Avantich. Anyone else? Okay, we'll close discussion and we'll mark down the voting. So we'll start with Commissioner Walz.
I am voting for, wait, okay, so yes would be agreeing with and be dis-
Yes is agreeing with the recommendation to hire.
No, I'm not agreeing.
Commissioner Wick.
No.
Commissioner Fisher.
No.
Commissioner Alwell.
No.
Commissioner Avantich.
No.
Commissioner Carey.
Yes.
Commissioner Pillsbury.
No.
Commissioner Barlow.
Yes.
Commissioner Gulick.
Looks the same.
Commissioner Gorman.
Yes.
Six to three, the motion fails.
Okay, so we have six noes, three yeses, and one abstention, so the motion fails. Thank you. Moving on to item, you know what, at this point, a point of order, I think we'll amend, we'll talk about the agenda based on time.
So I'll make a motion to table items, six, Chair's report, item eight, student report, sorry, item nine, committee report, item 10, superintendent's report, item 11, superintendent's monitoring report, item 12, mandatory policy updates.
And executive session for?
We, we, we have to do that, it'll be brief, but we have to.
So those were the ones, so my motion is six, seven is the consent agenda, so that stays in, six, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12.
10C because that's important feedback for.
Sorry, I'm gonna amend my motion. Six, eight, nine, 10A, 10B, 10D, 11, 12.
Okay. I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Did you not, six, six B, did you just table that?
Oh, sorry, no, we can, we can, we will include six B because I just.
All right, so do we just vote?
You know, let's table it, let's table it. Do you think we should, or no, we should need to, you need to.
So we just, we did a motion, we voted yes. So I, correct, everybody said aye?
Yeah.
So I take, I make a motion to add six B back in?
Yes.
I second that.
Second. All right, Wick, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion passes.
Thank you, superintendent.
So we'll start with Chair's report, item B. So this was a motion for policy flexibility. The Chair, actually I'll ask Commissioner Wick, actually the Chair can do it, make a motion to move to allow the superintendent flexibility on the implementation of policy 2.2D, hiring and treatment of staff in order to execute a principal hiring process that is inclusive of multiple vacancies to achieve principal placement in time for the 2019-2020 school year. Do I have a second?
I, I, I'm not sure I second it because I don't quite understand it. It doesn't say what the change of the process is and maybe we could.
But he sent the communication to you prior to, I sent you that memo.
Remember how?
Yeah, no, I get it, and I'm in favor generally, but just speaking aloud, this could be interpreted as just kind of gutting the whole, gutting the whole process entirely. So I just wonder what parts of the process are you changing, and if you could be specific, I think you'll have our support. I thought it was just pooling the candidates.
Yeah, I did send the memo around how we would restructure in order to meet the timelines for the 2019-2020 school year. We have potential anticipated three principal vacancies, and we wanted to ensure that we could expedite the process by having one process that we could pull the candidates through and still follow the steps that we had in terms of staff input, community input, and interview process.
So that's very clear, can we embed that in a motion?
It is, well, I did send you a, what I thought was clear, a document maybe two weeks ago after board had some conversations in terms of.
What in the policy are you asking specifically that you have flexibility on?
Well, we, we want to pull the candidates for sure, pull the, the three vacancies, anticipated vacancies, and we also want some flexibility around being able to gather input considering the timeframes.
So I'm gonna read what I think is the relevant part of the policy. Shall not fail to develop blah, 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 blah. Such systems and procedures shall not fail to include a detailed and authentic stakeholder engagement process related to hiring district employees, which engagement process shall be appropriate with respect to the type of employee to be hired.
Will you still have a parent, sorry, I think it's responsive to what he said.
One minute, one minute.
Okay, so HD, hiring a permanent or interim building leader or assistant building leader without involving staff from the building or program and parents guardians of students currently in the school program in the vetting and interview process, is that the, the one that you want flexibility on?
No, not really.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna.
It's really, the major crux of it is the ability to, to, to pull and expedite the timeline so we can actually make some offers before the school year starts.
I absolutely understand your intent.
We're still gonna include, we're still gonna include the staff and community input pieces.
I absolutely understand what you're asking to do. What I'm asking is what part of the policy says you can't do?
Right, the only thing I just wanted to express to the board that we're still gonna enforce the policy, but we may not do it in the same fashion as we've done the last process considering there are three and we have some timeline pieces, but we still will meet those expectations around gathering input from staff and from community.
Okay, so maybe we can just put this into, reword it briefly here so we don't have to waste a lot of time and see if we're all in favor of it. The changes you want to make, so the motion would be a motion to allow the superintendent to pool the candidates for the elementary school principal positions that may be open, but not to.
And to move expeditiously?
Well, I, that's, to me, that doesn't, I don't know what that means, but, but not to, not to circumvent the stakeholder engagement process that's set forth in the policy.
I would say just to be inclusive of the stakeholder process.
Meaning you will.
We will do some, the stakeholder process.
Okay, so it's just pooling of candidates essentially. So maybe if Bonnie, because Bonnie's could take in the notes here, right? I mean, Bonnie's gotta do the minutes, so it was.
Well, I have it, Jeff, we're saying, we're saying move to allow the superintendent flexibility for the implementation of policy 2.2 that is inclusive of multiple vacancies to choose, and.
I gave it to.
This being pooling the candidacies for elementary schools.
I like, I like.
Because we're specifically talking about the elementary schools.
I think all he's asking to do is pooling candidates.
I thought it went to Mike, okay, it goes to her.
There's anything else that you want to circumvent, just let's make it explicit.
No, I think we can, I think we can imagine when we originally spoke of the, of the process, there were possibility of sort of circumventing some other pieces, but I think we've worked out some strategies that will be able to honor the spirit of the policy, but we would still definitely need an opportunity to pool candidates.
I remember reading, reading something like that.
We gotta limit, Robert's rules advises that we be very specific about the language of a motion that we're voting on. It can't be ambiguous in any way, so I, I just say that as a point of order. So I think what we're asking, motion to allow the superintendent to pool the elementary school principal candidates so as to facilitate the process, but otherwise to comply with the policies.
I second that motion.
Any discussion? Commissioner Avantich.
Yeah, I see that as being a problem for the magnet schools because the arts magnet, they would like to have a person that is focused on arts, similarly with sustainability currently, and so I don't see how you can take a candidate for a non-magnet school and just put them as a candidate for a magnet school.
That's a good point.
Anyone else? Thank you. Okay.
Well, I was just gonna ask what it means to pool the candidates, you know, that they're pooling them for applications for the principalships that are open in the district? That's, so a large group of candidates from that pool, they could be assigned to the different high scho, the different schools? I'm just wondering what it means to pool candidates, I guess. If it's clear to people, it doesn't matter, I guess.
We would pool applicants who are interested in becoming elementary principals in Burlington School District. We would differentiate in the process in a way to have people identify their, their preference of different schools and also gather that information in our input process.
Okay. Provide clarity, Commissioner Carey.
Yes, and from what Monica said about the magnet schools, it's important.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other discussions? Okay.
I just wanted to say that.
Commissioner Pillsbury.
Russell, in the email you gave us today, he was asking for, for the parents, community members from each of the schools, I'm sure, I'm, I'm hoping that the magnet school parents will talk about the need for thematic, a person that's focused on arts or sustainability. I'm hoping that's how you're gonna get their input for the magnet schools. But I am concerned about, that, not, not every administrator will be able to, be able to focus on the theme of arts or on the theme of sustainability, that's something we need to consider for magnet schools.
Understood, thank you, Commissioner Pillsbury. All right, and then I would like to vote on this motion.
Chair, well, point of order, could someone, Bonnie, did you feel comfortable that you transcribed the motion on the table? Would you like to recite it or would you like to ask us to recite it, just so we're clear on what we're voting on?
Can you recite it so I have, make sure I have everything correct?
Thank you, I, I hope I can. Did you take something down and then maybe I can, or, I don't want to embarrass, I don't need to embarrass, I just, it's so late. I think it was the superintendent.
Motion to allow the superintendent.
Motion to allow.
To pool the elementary school principals' candidates.
Yes, to pool the elementary school principal candidates.
Principal candidates, right.
So as to facilitate the process, but without circumventing the existing policies on point, without otherwise circumventing the existing policies on point.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you for the clarification, and the motion passes. Next on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda.
We don't have to vote on that, right?
I think we do, don't we? Yeah, yeah, we did.
Yeah, we do.
Okay.
It's due to approve it. Okay, will someone give me a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Should you approve?
Thank you, Commissioner Gorman, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
Okay, so let's vote, all those in favor of adopting the agenda, the consent, excuse me, approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries, the consent agenda has been approved. Next on the agenda is item 10C, superintendent performance goals.
I'm just kidding.
Yes?
Yeah. Open the laptop. Can I let Director Lavry go?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Nay.
Okay, I'll try to, I'll try to expedite this, I know you've received these documents, so I won't go through it, I'll just highlight a few areas that I think are relevant. Just to give you a little bit of background, this first page here talks about the superintendent performance goal, so this would have happened in 2018, you can notice the first line there talks about the board approving these performance goals in 2017 and asking for a development of these performance goals in 2018, and the two goals that were outlined were around employment, diversity, equity, inclusion, hiring, and a positive culture and climate. So you can see the overview I've outlined at the bottom there, so in 2018, the board received and reviewed the plans for the purpose of strategic focus and performance and compensation, so the board did that work, and then in 2019, now is the opportunity for the board to monitor the beginning of the implementation of the, of the performance compensations. See if I can scroll down. You'll see in green, this is following from the previous presentation to show that when some of these items have been started in terms of implementation, it gives an option for the board to, to see that. I won't go through the, the first bit of metrics there, because I know you've read the document, you've seen it, so, but I'll, I'll just get right to the, the body of some of the work here. You can see it's sort of a, a procedural process here, we look at assessment and data, and in this particular first one, around the employment and diversity hiring, back in 2017, we had a report that had some metrics around what our district looked like in terms of diversity hiring of staff and what the numbers were, so that was done in 2017, so we had started that work, and we started collaborating with Brown University around some strategies that they were willing to support the district in. Also, you'll see in communications and outreach, these are some of the strategies that we had developed that we would use for outreach to try to solicit a diversified workforce, and that was started in 2018 as well, too, so we're well on our way. Some of the things we want to still establish is around recruitment ambassadors, we need to develop an HR guide development, guidebook, and have a better e-platforms for people to access some of our electronic pieces. New recruitment efforts, a number of different strategies there that we've started already, and we'll update you as the partnerships move on, but all those, all those items in the, in that column, we've made contact and we've had conversations and we've been able to submit our information to these organizations and to start those relationships that BSD is employer of choice. A couple of significant organizations that we identified that we need to, to join in order to have access and to let them know that we are an employer of choice listed there, and I've had the opportunity to actually attend some of their annual meetings and conferences in the past year to sort of try to heighten the profile of Burlington School District and to get access to candidates who are looking for, for jobs, who, who fell under the category of, of candidates of color or even other, other equity categories as well, too. Retention strategies, one of the strategies that we talked about in the development previously, there had been other attempts to, to diverse for our workforce, and one of the major challenges was, was retaining staff once we had them, and we identified a number of issues around why we couldn't retain them, and so we employed these strategies to try to develop the kind of culture that would, that would encourage people to, to stay within the district and continue, and then that sort of fosters a more positive environment in terms of attracting other candidates of color to, to come to the district as well. So you can see on the right there a number of strategies we've started, but there's a lot of continuing and establishing. a lot of continuing and establishing and wanting to sort of move to the next level in terms of being able to, to support these strategies that are put on, on the left around retention. Targeted hiring process, you can see that there, and we've done some of that work in terms of improving our processes and our packages. One of the things that we haven't done strategically, and something we'll have to work with our HR, is develop incentive packages to have people really have an interest in coming to Vermont. Earlier in the year, when I was in the South and some of the conferences and talking to potential candidates, you know, one of the, one of the big sort of drawbacks when you're in the South is that they, they think it's really cold up here, and it is, but there are lots of other things that you can do up here, so sort of trying to highlight that and get candidates interested in coming through our process. But we do have a lot, quite a bit of success with candidates who live in New England, who actually know the temperatures and know the, sort of the advantageous opportunities up here, and that's, that's been encouraging to do that. One of the things we have to do a much better job of is days, is the training around bias training for our interviewers, so that's a continuous process in terms of scheduling training so we can have more staff who have the training that can be involved in the, in the hiring process and have that lens in terms of bias, unconscious bias. Okay? I'm gonna skip through, because I wanna get to some good highlights here. So initially, when we had developed the, the process, we had targeted some milestones. One was December 2018 around implementation review, and we did that, and here we are, March 2019, was the board monitoring, so that's what we're doing right now in terms of monitoring. Then I'll be back in September again to do an overview of the progress, to say, okay, this is what we've done so far based on where we started back in 20, really, we're really 2017, and this is the progress that we've reached thus far. I'm just checking, is this the right document? Something, I'm missing something. Well, I'm just gonna scan through here, because I think that there might be, make sure this is the...
Was the 2019?
Oh, okay. Okay. I wanna make sure I'm going in the right direction. Okay. So the other performance goal was around positive culture and climate, and, you know, we came through that goal back in 2018 around, just sort of anecdotal information from board members and staff in terms of improving climate. We did develop in our strategic plan, climate is one of the target areas, and then the board had asked me to develop a progressive plan around addressing these pieces. So through that, one of the first pieces we had around assessment of data is to collect some data. We were fortunate enough to get a grant with the National School Climate Center, and they helped us with a, doing a survey that will do some monitoring pieces on, and really solidified what we suspected in terms of climate. So the data just proved through what we kinda knew, and so that gave us an opportunity to start looking at different strategies that would support us. And I know that if you looked at the document, there's attachment that shows the, the data that was collected. The data is also posted on the website. Schools have done their own distribution of data on their websites and through their newsletters, and we've also have some data that we've used at Central Office in terms of our staff working with that. One of the big pieces that we wanted to work on was around developing a campaign of kindness, respect, and wonder, really celebrating success, right? I think there's, we have really good intentions around this, and we're making good efforts, but I think there's so much more that we could, we could do in terms of really profiling what's happening in the district. Today, at the board meeting, was great to see us honoring many of our student leaders who've done things outside, but we, we're trying to move into the next phase in terms of really finding concrete ways of recognizing our staff in different ways that can, that can share. So some of you have seen some of the things that we do, like the weekly Twitter story fi that goes around staff, seem to really appreciate that. We get a lot, many comments around, you know, getting a chance to showcase what's happening in the classrooms. We've done some profiles, student achievement, we've recognized staff awards at our in-service days and our staff gatherings, and being able to share, share that as well too. Peer-to-peer recognition, so in our different departments, we have opportunities where peers are recognizing peers for their accomplishments. And as, so as I said, so we've gotten off to a really good start on that, but I think there's, there's considerably more that we need to do, and, and my plan is to hopefully come forward with something that can be a little more concrete that we can also share at the board level, more formal kind of recognition of some of the staff contributions. Restorative practice collaboration, so since we've developed this plan, we have developed a restorative practice collaborative, which is inclusive of pretty much almost all sectors of our staffing. You know, it's not just teachers, not just principals, but it's also the support staff, and they gather monthly and direct many of the initiatives that we're doing. As of, as of late, our last in-service was also focused on climate and restorative practice, and we had the all-staff together, and we have facilitation throughout the day, and staff had an opportunity to go to different sites in the afternoon to continue the work around restorative practice. And it was really, it was really actually very impactful having this, these conversations, because we're now able to kinda get deeper. Some of the topics we started off the day with, which I was kinda surprised the facilitators were ready to take on these, were talk about things like gossip and misinformation, and so we started having conversations with staff from their own jurisdictions right up to the central office level. And our last training was the first, was the first training, actually, we had a platform specifically for central office staff to, to also get the training. Sometimes, often they get left out of these kind of things in terms of, but understanding from our data and from the feedback that we received, that we know that we need to include the entire district in these conversations in order to make the change that we want. Bargaining, just quick highlights, we've, we've had some good success working with the, our bargaining use and trying to work on collaborative initiatives that will support our students and staff together, to continuous work with the conversations we've had, and we've, as of late, had some really good projects that we're, we're kickstarting, and I've, I've initiated some conversations with the BEA, inviting them to have, to identify some of their leaders and staff to be involved in some of the initiatives that we're going forward, like recruiting and other areas that would show some collaboration and, and build the relationships that we need to have in order to build a climate that, that we want to, to see. And then there's some examples there of superintendent outreach, right, from classrooms to many of the events that happen around the district. I was at one today, which was great to, to be at the arts event and having a conversation. One of the things that came out was that was the, that's the only, the art celebration from, from the CBA is the only youth art recognition in Burlington at that age, right? So we had kids who were like from grade one right up, and it's, it's amazing to see. This was the 32nd year, one of the things I mentioned was that it would be powerful to have some of the past recipients, because I was sure there, there must be students who received it 30 years ago, maybe have children that are in our system and have gone on to other things, so it'd be, it'd be good to kinda highlight some of that. So it's, it's, I enjoy being at those kind of events and, and sort of representing the district. I wish I could do it more. I would spend, you know, 90% of my time doing that if I could, but the job requires other, other aspects. The other piece was around central office climate. We identified that there's, needed to be some work around some of the leadership at central office and operations, and I've been doing some work on that. From last spring, we started with some analysis within the staff and among administrators around leadership profiles and what they saw, what they didn't see, and what they felt needed to change. We did some work with that, but then we moved to the next stage now that we've have a consultant working with our central office staff to look at how we can restructure some of the customer service aspects and also some of the logistical HR and business office relationships and management pieces, so that's, that's moving forward, so I'm happy to see that progress and looking forward to making those positive changes for us. The, I'm gonna scroll down here. I'm gonna skip this. I wanted to get to this piece here, because I wanted to, this is really, when we talked about the, the employment diversity plan, one of the things that I felt was important was to have some sort of aspirational target. We can't have, we don't, we can't enforce quotas, but we had to have an aspirational sale. We need something to kinda work towards to give us some momentum, and I came up with this little, well, I thought it was catchy anyways, 20 by 2020 that we would, we would hire, and surprisingly, even though I don't believe we've, we've even scratched the surface in terms of the implementation of the strategies that we have, if you look at the, hopefully you've had a chance to look at it, the graphic down at the bottom there, since the 2017, after we, January 2017, we hired 709 individuals in all those categories of employment. If you go to the right side of the, the, the graphic there, out of 709, 89 were people of color that fit into the diversity compendium, so we certainly met and exceeded the 20 that we thought would be challenging. So it's interesting that when you start to put a focus on an area, that you can see some, some growth. I'm still not totally satisfied with some of the other areas, and I think we could do a little bit better, but as we can take this data and we can make, and have a focus around some of, some of the areas as well too. And when, when I'm out talking about diversifying our workforce, I know our focus has been around employees of color, but I, I do speak to the other equity pieces in the umbrella, because I, I am a proponent and an advocate around looking for an inclusive workforce that's inclusive of, you know, special needs, ability, different genders, sexual orientation, the whole compendium, right? So we've been talking among staff, we can't collect all that data together, and, and the focus from the board at the time was around staff of color, but at the same time, while we're doing it, we wanna kinda expand and be able to be an inclusive district in looking at those pieces. So that's a piece that I wanted you kinda to see, that we've had some significant progress in that area, and I'm, I'm pretty proud of that to, to have come up, and I think the strategies that we can put in forward can sort of amplify that and hopefully get to the point where our, our staff are reflecting not just our students, but, you know, society in general. And with that, I, I shared that with the board for board's reflection and information, and I know board will have conversations in private session around the content of it, so.
Thank you, Superintendent Bang. I speak for myself, but I thoroughly enjoyed being able to look at that over the past couple of days and appreciate the work that went involved, the culmination of the year's worth of work laid out in, in great graphics and, and content, so thank you for taking the time to do that. Is there any discussion or Commissioner Pillsbury?
I'd like the last diversity report chart, I'm very impressed. I think one of the things that with the diversity of our staff, of our student body now, those are our future employees.
Yep.
And I, I know that there are BHS students who are in college that are thinking about education, and those are the ones that I hope that we can reach out to and say, Seahorse Pride, come on back, come on back.
Yep, absolutely. Thank you for mentioning that, it's one thing I, I forgot to. A couple of years ago, when I was actually, had the opportunity to teach at UVM, I did come across a couple of former BHS students, and I said, wow, what, why wouldn't we reach back when they're in high school here and encourage them to go through education and have a pipeline that we can have our own students come back? So that's a, a great pool to, to look at just from, from our own students, and I'm sure they'd be happy to come back. And we actually do have a couple of students who are graduates of Burlington High School that have been hired in the last couple of years that are, are in our system.
Thank you, Commissioner Pillsbury. Commissioner Fisher?
I think this is great progress, but I also don't wanna spend too much time patting ourselves on the back, looking at that, that chart, and looking at where, what type of position we hired diverse candidates into, and the amount in directors, principals, and teachers is four. So there's, you know, those are, those are the positions, I'm not putting anything by other staff, higher educators, but, you know, you're talking about students of color and minority students looking, having role models, right? It's the teachers in the classroom, it's the leaders in the school.
Yep, absolutely, and that, of course, we're well aware of that, and if you read the content of the information, one of the challenges I identify is that the pool in Vermont is small in the first place, but it's not just a Vermont issue, it's a national issue in terms of getting the pool big enough that you can have just the natural kind of flow of it. But it's a challenge that we're willing to step up to and, and to try to bring strategies forward to diversify our force, so.
Anyone else? Commissioner Walts.
You've got loan forgiveness here as a strategy, so it sounds like while, while you've got them in the high school, you might wanna talk about their future financial options as well.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you so much, Superintendent Bang. And with that, we will move on to item number 13, Executive Session B. Commissioner Fisher?
Yes, thank you, Chair Wall. Please hold while I access your information. Motion to enter executive session under one, VSA 13A3, to discuss the evaluation of the superintendent. I make a motion to enter executive session.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Walts, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, we'll move into executive session. Thank you.